Okay, so we will call this one's meeting to order. And we will start with an showcase the economic impact of SUNY FMCC and our guests with us by Zoom.
Thanks, thanks, Madam Chair. I'm going to give Jake just a brief introduction and give you a little context for why we've invited him to be with us this evening. So, you know, you've heard from me recently, this is obviously our budget advocacy season. The governor just released her budget proposal. That will begin the next couple of months of negotiations with with her colleagues in the Senate and the Assembly. And then obviously, we have our local, our local sponsors who also are going through their budget processes for the upcoming year. And one of the points that I think it's really important for us to make is what is the value of Fulton Montgomery Community College to the region? Why is it important that we remain not only a publicly funded, but a, but an extraordinarily viable publicly funded institution? And so using some of the, the grant funds that we had available to us, we engaged Jake's company, Lightcast, to work with us on, you know, really providing information on what that looks like, what, what impact Fulton Montgomery actually brings to the community. And he's going to do a much better job than I, than I could ever do in explaining this. But you know, there, there are clear financial economic advantages and impacts that the college makes directly to the community. And then there are social impacts too, that are a little bit harder to quantify in terms of, you know, seeing the actual dollars in front of you on a ledger, but, but actually are out there. And so with that, you know, somewhat nebulous introduction, I'm going to turn, turn the rest of this over to Jake and, and let him give you a much more intelligent conversation.
Everybody, thank you for the opportunity to come speak to you guys today regarding the economic impact study. I've got a short presentation, I'm going to go over and leave some time at the end for general question and answer. So if anything is a little unclear, let me know and we can, we can jump back quickly. And I will say at the offset, I'm a little less familiar with teams than they am Zoom. So if there are any issues in terms of presenting, please let me know and I can, I can readjust.
You're doing, you're doing great so far.
Awesome, great. Well, and Greg gave a great primer in terms of what, what the EIS is and kind of what we were trying to do with this study. So this little background in regards to who Lightcast is, you may know us under another name, MC or MC Burning Glass. Lightcast is the same company. So over the past 20 years, we've worked with higher education institutions. We've completed about 3,000 of these across the country. And I think our results, and we'll kind of speak for themselves here. So really quickly, what is the economic impact study? So economic impact study consists of two different analyses. The first is the impact analysis. So primarily what we're looking to do there is kind of address the question of using a, using a hypothetical of if the college didn't exist, sort of what would be removed from the regional economy? And then that allows us to then kind of determine what is the impact of the college. In the second component, investment analysis. So investment analysis, we're comparing the costs and benefits to determine return on investment to a number of different stakeholders. So the ones you'll see here are, are student to the taxpayer and then to society in New York at large. Just a little bit of context in terms of sort of economic conditions within Fulton Montgomery Counties. And whenever you see service area listed here, we're referring to Fulton and Montgomery Counties. So first, just a quick look at average earnings by education level. So you'll see here, we approximate the value of an associate's degree earned in a community college as providing about $6,400 more in average annual income than a high school graduate. And a little bit less there for a certificate. Gross regional product, which you can think of in the same terms as GDP is about $4.6 billion. And in total, there's about 44,000 jobs in the service region. So looking at Fulton Montgomery in fiscal year 2022, served a little under 2,000 credit students, about 200 non-credit students, 216 employees, about a little over $13 million in total payroll, about $3 million in total tuition revenue. And an important point here that I'll touch on a bit later is that 19% of students served originated outside the region. So outside of Fulton Montgomery Place. So moving into the, the specifics of the impact analysis, there are four component parts and we're going to look at them one by one. So first is the operation spending. So this is essentially money spent on keeping the college's doors open, paying employees and all of that. So payroll maintenance and day-to-day operations were composed this part. It's important to say that we are accounting for two kind of factual scenarios when we look at operation spending specifically. First of which is leakages. So money being spent by the college and suppliers is going out of state. So a great kind of example for this is you can imagine if an employee takes their income, a portion of their income and buys a car. Part of that purchase of car will go to the local dealer and that money will stay, most likely stay in the region. But part of that income will go to the manufacturer. So you know, wherever the manufacturer is based, a part of that income is leaving the region. So with our methodology and throughout this study, we're accounting for that. So in total, the operations of the college generated an added income of $15.2 million. And this is mostly and specifically, you know, things like the purchases of the college is making, the purchases of its employees, they're, they're spending on things like, you know, living mortgages, groceries, all that. And in turn, the spending then goes on to support about 237 jobs throughout the region. Next, we're looking at construction impact. So the spending of the college on construction and separated from general operations. So again, we're accounting for those same ripple effects that, that sends some of that money outside the region. But in total, the college's spending generated an added income of about $250,000 and supported about four jobs.
And I just want to interrupt Jake for one second on that one. You know, unfortunately, because of the analysis here, that was at the height of COVID. So we, our, our annual construction spend was, was significantly less than it, than it normally would have been. But, but it is what it is. I mean, the data is what it is.
And obviously that can fluctuate and it really is, is consummate to what was spent. So it's obviously significant lower than operations, but not unexpected for the amount that was spent on construction. So the next part of our analysis, we're looking at student spending impact. So specifically referring here to relocated and retained students. So if you can think back to a couple of slides ago, where I talked about 19% of students originated from outside the region. So if we were, our overall hypothetical of the college not existing, obviously those people wouldn't be relocating to that, to Fulton Montgomery Counties at the same rate as they current, as they are to live and work and, and spend money within the region. So that is a, is a big added impact of those people moving, moving specifically for their education. Second portion of that is retained students. So this, this is really looking at the value of the college in to keep people living and locally. So we're looking at students who would have otherwise left the region to attain the education because of Fulton Montgomery College do not have to leave. So the, the total of that impact is about $1.3 million in additional dollars, in additional income from their spending would have otherwise left. And that's equivalent to about 20 jobs. And, and the next section here is the biggest, it's alumni spending. So alumni impact is your, is, is the bread and butter of higher education and kind of the, the most unique portion of this. So here, we're looking specifically at the higher earnings attained by your graduates because they attended school. So their higher earnings and I neglected to mention the increased, increased output from local businesses because they have access to people with, with higher levels of education, people who are able to more fit, provide more output at local businesses. So here, this, this number sums up about the $36.5 million in regional impact or about 450 total jobs. Within this alumni impact, we're also accounting for similar effects like we are with operations and student spending. So the two kind of mitigating factors here that we're looking at to try and keep this as realistic as possible, first is substitution of labor. So essentially the idea, even with college, people could have satisfied some of their need for, for labor with people who didn't have that same education impact. The second is, second would be alternative use of education. So the assumption that reasonably people would have gone and sought education elsewhere and then come back to the region with those skills. So those are kind of two, two things we're counting for to try to keep that estimate conservative and defensible. So overall, total impact, about $53.2 million in add income in the region, which is equal to about 1.2% of the GRP. So 2.7, the gross product of the region is the direct result of Fulton Montgomery College and its alumni. This equates to about 711 jobs in the regions. Or another great, a great way to think about this and kind of contextualize it, because sometimes these numbers can be a little bit opaque is one out of 63 jobs in the region is the result of the college and its graduates. And to the right here, the, you'll see this figure impacts by industry. So really looking at the specific industries that are impacted by, by your graduates. Healthcare and social assistance, a great one to highlight. Given macro conditions regarding healthcare, everybody's always very interested in that one. So I'm going to move, transition quickly here into investment analysis. So investment analysis really is looking at the college's value to its main stakeholders. So I mentioned them briefly, but we're going to go over them again really quickly here. So student perspective, so what value the college provides to its students. So here, we're taking into account on the cost side, opportunity costs. So the idea that people could be, say, working instead of attending school, as well as the money they spent on tuition and student loan costs. So trying to account as much as we can for all of, all of those factors. We take that number and we're dividing it by the, the total benefit, which is the sum of their higher future earnings. So when we do that here, you'll see we arrive at a cost benefit ratio of 5.2. So what that means is that for every dollar invested in their education, students are receiving $5.2 back in future higher earnings. That last number rate of return, you'll see the bottom is a, is a measure essentially of the speed at which that investment is returned. Just for a little bit of context, the stock market's 30-year average returns about 9.6%. So about twice the rate of if they had gone and invested that money in the market. Second section, so taxpayer perspective. So how taxpayers' money is going to support the college, obviously, and that's a, that's a cost to them. You'll see there that in future, in the future tax revenue and government savings, government savings is really a kind of a component of, of this. It's not, it's not, it's a little harder to quantify, but we're looking at costs to the taxpayer that would have been accrued otherwise. So things like, like healthcare costs, the, the other non-quantifiable benefits of education. So things like, you know, people who are less likely to have certain health conditions, less likely to use the justice system, less likely to be on income assistance program. So by attending school, they're, on average, they're, they're using those services less and saving the taxpayer money. So you'll see there, we got a total cost and benefit ratio of about 1.1%, or 1.1, sorry. So 1.1 obviously doesn't immediately jump off the page as in terms of benefit cost ratio, but you have to contextualize this. First off, not every college generates a, a positive cost benefit ratio. So not every, not everyone's paying per se. In addition to that, it's very rare for other sorts of government projects to, government funding to result in a positive cost benefit ratios. It's very rare for, for a lot of public works to be able to say that we're actually providing a dividend to the taxpayer like that. So it's a powerful figure there. And finally, moving on to social perspective. So social perspective is looking at the state as a whole. So as a state, New York benefits from the education that the colleges, the college provides, primarily through that, that increase in economic base. So if you, higher earnings and tax revenue and as well as benefiting from those, those government savings we talked about in the previous section. So in, in total costs to, to both, to society as a whole, not just, I should clarify, they're not just the state, but to the students as well. So society, so those two groups constituting that, that social perspective, that's society. You see that about $21.8 million in total costs and generating about $121 million in total benefits. So a cost benefit ratio of 5.6, which again is very robust. So just a quick wrap up, looking at overall the results. So $53.2 million in added income to the region, 1.2% of GRP and 711 jobs supported, along with a robust cost benefit ratios for each of those three, three groups. So really briefly, next steps for the study. So what you can do with this information. So in case I forgot to mention at the beginning, as a part of this study, we provided Fulton Montgomery with a number of different documents that can be used to support, support either telling your story to legislators, to business partners, media, to students, even just overall demonstrating your value. So those are, those, those bubbles there have some, some examples and, and very good ones. And it sounds like Greg has formulated a plan in terms of what's going to be done. Here's some examples from other schools in terms of what they've done to, to kind of create a, an overall message and broadcast these, these good results out. So you can combine your results to create fashion reports, webpage. There's a lot of this data works great in webpages. It's a lot of big numbers. They're pretty, I, and attention grabbing. Or publishing them in theoretical publications also. We've seen great work with that. Press releases as well, using it to create some social media images or again, taking these results to legislatures and helping to secure additional funding. That's all I had in terms of presentation. I'm happy to take questions regarding the study and the results.
I just want to take a, take a minute to thank Jake and Anna for their, for their assistance with this. I think this is, you know, powerful stuff for us as we move forward with our advocacy for making the case of, you know, supporting Fulton Montgomery and, and maintaining Fulton Montgomery as a, as a vital resource for our community.
Thank you. I think sometimes people don't consider enough like the economic impact that just the job, the jobs that we prepare people for and even just the physical presence of so much people on our campus can have on the region. I think using that for our lobbying purposes is potentially helpful. Very much.
Thanks, Anna. Thanks, Jake.
Thank you.
Looks like we do have, do we have any public or union comments this evening? Not seeing anyone on Teams, so people move on. And everyone's packets are the minutes from our December meeting. Get better, we had a chance to review them. I'd ask for any corrections, but not a motion to approve. Trustee Garcia, and second by trustee Wilson, any discussion? All in favor to approve the minutes? Opposed, abstain, motion carries? I have nothing to report as your chair this evening, so move on to the president's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hope you are seeing my screen. Let's see.
Yes.
Advance some slides here. So I just, just have a couple of things. As I mentioned, the governor has released her, her executive budget proposal. Few items related to community colleges. I know that the chancellor would love nothing more than for us to extol the, 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 the value of, of what she has included in her budget. You'll see that really the, the theme here is no change. And I guess we can say no change is better than, better than a loss. But as you all know, you know, our expenses continue to rise. And so when you hold our funding level, that, that essentially equates to a loss and requires us to consider other ways to, you know, find revenue streams to support the college. You know, particularly as, as enrollment remains relatively flat. You know, that said, you know, you will hear the, the governor, you will hear the chancellor talk about how we've, you know, we've avoided the loss of $84 million as a sector. That's, that's a misnomer. And again, as we've, as we've talked before, you know, he, he's, you know, they're essentially funding us to 2010 levels. It is what it is. But so we will, we will continue to be creative as we have been. We've, we've been incredibly successful finding external sources of funding. We are likely going to be having serious conversations with our sponsors again this year about incremental increases as well. But, and, and of course, this is the, the first shot. You know, who knows what the, what the, the Senate and the Assembly come up with. But if, if the last few years have been a guide, this is, this is likely what we're looking at, which is essentially flat aid. I highlighted a couple of, of items here. The governor, as, as, has been the, the favorite thing to do in New York State, is attempting to legislate through the budget. And she's thrown some things in there, one of which is, you know, the requirement that all students file the FAFSA. I'm not saying that's a bad thing. There is a, a school of thought that there's a lot of money being left on the table by our students by not applying for that federal financial aid. Of course, we also know that the FAFSA changed this year and hasn't exactly rolled out very smoothly. But that's another story for another day. There's some, there's some other things in there that just look at increasing the coordination, the information coordination between SED, SUNY and HESC and CUNY. That's been a little bit rocky and so that, that's not a terrible thing either. You know, a, a highlight is these are the capital projects that we proposed. The counties, both Fulton and Montgomery Counties approved these projects through their processes. The governor did include these projects in her budget as well. Capital tends to be fairly stable through the negotiations process. So we're, we're hoping to maintain those, those projects as, and get started as soon as we can with those. We've talked with you in the past about the OPWDD grant and I hope I'm not stealing someone else's thunder. But we found out just this week that the grant has been extended through 2028. They've been pleased with, with how we're doing with our first cohort of DSPs. And so we're excited that we're going to have the opportunity to continue that funding for a few more years. Director of Facilities Scott Marshall and myself had a meeting today with Fulton County officials and officials from the Dormitory Authority of State in New York today. This is something that's been about a year in the, in the planning. DASNY has historically, you know, been, been the dormitory authority, worked with state-operated campuses in terms of their residential side and provide their, you know, providing the funding, providing a lot of the construction financing, et cetera. And, and on the community college side, they've, they've primarily just been the, the authority that holds the money. They've been, over the last four or five years, expanding out their service scope and working with community colleges. And notably, they've, they've done some projects for Sudi Adaradak, Columbia Green, SUNY Ulster. And they reached out to us to see if this is something that we might be interested in working with them on. Now, we've had a strong, strong relationship with Fulton County and the Fulton County Planning Department over the last 30 years, certainly, as we do our capital projects. But as, as the county staff gets stretched, as our staffs get stretched and as these projects become more complicated because of various rules, regulations, et cetera, it's probably time to, to consider some, some alternative ways of doing it. So there, there's a couple of options available to us that, that we discussed today in our meeting. One of which is, you know, picking a project. So let's just, you know, take the electrical distribution project that we have planned for next year. We could sign an agreement with DASNY. The DASNY would essentially manage that project for the counties. The nice thing for the counties is, you know, really all they have to do is pay the bill when they get their invoice for their 25%. As opposed to the planning department having to, you know, work through the bidding process, work with the contractors, work with, you know, the inspectors and work with the, you know, the various county departments to make sure that invoices are being processed and, and payments are being made to vendors and reimbursements are being sought. And, you know, so this, this takes a lot of the lift off of, of us locally. They have, because of their catalog of, of projects statewide in their portfolio, I mean, they, they have the ability to, you know, get much better pricing, much better contracting. And, and one of the concerns we talked about is, you know, we didn't want to lose the ability to work with local contractors. So we didn't want this to be, okay, well now you're going to bring in some behemoth contractor from downstate that nobody knows. And that's not at all how it works. It, it's, but they have the ability to work with local contractors to, to really manage the process in a, in a much more efficient way and in a way that, that could potentially benefit the college and, and the two sponsor counties. and in a way that could potentially benefit the college and the two sponsor counties. The other option that's available to us is that we could sign a managed services agreement where, you know, they essentially are our capital projects managers. So it's not, and when we have a project that the counties approve, it's like submitting a work order to them as opposed to, you know, trustee Wilson is very familiar with the process now where, you know, multiple resolutions are going through the county processes, the committees, the, you know, and when you're dealing with Montgomery County, there's bonding resolutions. And, you know, it becomes a very complicated and prolonged process. So there's potential here, you know, the planning department, the budget department, and John Stead and I met with them today. We're going to have some follow-up in the near future to see if this is something we might want to dip our toe in the water with. Because it really seems like it could provide some real benefits and really streamline some of our capital projects. They also have a much better process for developing facilities, assessments, facilities master plans. I mean, they're built for this. And so, you know, we'll see. More to come on that. But it was a good meeting today and definitely wanted the board to be aware that that took place. And then we're also very excited to talk about mental health services. You know, we know more and more that our students are in need. We've struggled over the last few years. We did have, as part of our transformation funds, a mental health services component. Kudos to Arlene Spencer for working with Family Counseling Center and setting up a contract. We have an FMCC alum, Jeremy Pertel, who's going to be on campus daily, Monday through Friday, 30 to 4:30, and also having some remote hours that'll be determined as well. So we'll have that on-campus mental health resource as well as the network of the Family Counseling Center to rely on. And so we're very pleased to be able to make that announcement and provide that service for our students. And that is the end of my little spiel. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker. The college assembly report is in everyone's packet. And I will ask you first, you know, anything you'd like to tell us about today?
Yes, no, nothing to report. Speak quickly.
Over to the foundation report with trustee Garcia.
I go on the one feet. Send it out December 8th, in the May. Six thousand dollars, and this will be supporting the one purpose and, and, you know, this money staple match. When I said, we want to, for that purpose, any donor, if they don't want that, be scolded of that. That they don't, this is a thing they're running for. And number two, the foundation, that was 165 acres. And who, seventy-five, sixty-seven, Benedict, Fourners Road and Saratoga Road is on their contract. If you actually read the article that he said, put it out, it was a very nice one, very informative. And third item is foundation will be hosting a program on sex shop, concept, or non-for-profit awards. It's going to be Wednesday, March 6th, eight o'clock, A.M. in Allen House. The speaker will be B.J. Costello and Strahm, and complimentary, great possibilities there at that time, RSPP is required. And the deadline is March 1st. Fraila Gallery will be hosting a next show on Wednesday, January 24th. And the artist's name is Alexandra Higgins. The reception for that is Friday, February 2nd, by from six to eight P.M. Alexandra Higgins is an artist that, especially, is working with oil. But she also sculpting and creating pieces for both at home, you know, anybody's house or outside. And she has a gallery on window to the garden, art gallery in Mayfield, near that. And the artists, they will display their artwork. So with that, if nobody has any question, I conclude my report unless Lindsey has something to say. Thank you very much.
So you know, most artists, most cards were the gallery open. Yeah, actually, you didn't say anything. She actually puts a lot of her art on her Facebook page, Alexandria Higgins Art. So if you're a social person, check it out. She's been doing some stuff with, like, trains, some of her art. So it's, it's kind of like, I'm just about, she's got a pretty fine. Activity from nine hundred We also put information in regards to budget transfers contracts for the month. We do have one more motion. And more transfer requests. And so the motion is, obviously, that we approve all budget transfers that exceed $5,000. Oh, here it is. Sorry. It is moving from French benefits, transferring $48,450 from the security guard publicity line to French benefits for compensated assets. So, a special motion, all in favor? Oppone? Abstained? Motion carries. Dr. Tucker with trustee Linder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things you might point out in your cabinet for the stair tread relocation. Stair treads of all the stairs have been stalled. The side which thirty-fourth project that there should have been at this that showed that also painted to curb stall. And there is, as I said, us, the network, we are finishing project. New AC unit, or circle, has been stalled. Signing the fire alarm control panel, what's still, this week by a contractor. That concludes our
Okay, trustee Linder. And trustee Preston, what else? The latest academic affairs of college.
Sure, thank you. So yeah, just a few minor things. December, you know, with the holidays, not much was going on. Campus put out a few things. The fall internship fair that took place in a cooperative, more than 20 local employers and agencies over hundreds here. SUNY compared to Fontan, being F M was a word, that was a word, plus some of it's by your gas card, cost, and worries with a minimum of, say, dollars, months, successful. Up there, there's post-lease involved right now. Ninety hours, two hundred, hour, varying areas, services, decision services, criminal justice, first childhood, mission systems, technology, digital arts. Great, there. Month smart financial program, there's mid-year report, there are currently fifteen percent of FMCC students involved in that, surpasses their mid-year benchmarks achieved. It's been a great, great success. So excellent work there. And then finally, I chose to evolve it, for a launch development plan for enrollment. That means students might do get hold at FMCC as well as quality and receive transfer scholarships to receive their, a bachelor's science, bachelor's, I can't talk, bachelor of science program. So more to follow on that, but that's certain, so.
Also, student affairs. As of today, our spring twenty-four enrollment numbers are, we have ninety-nine students enrolled, which is up fifty-eight students from last spring, so that's good news. As well as, this is an increase of 6.16% increase in headcount and a 2.5% increase in that. There was a lot of activities at the end of our semester that is in this report. The admissions office worked in conjunction with academic advising to offer early spring student registration days with both daytime and daytime options. The evening time slots was a very popular time period and was filled up. There were college fundraisers and activities that were held by the EOP Trio Program on campus as well as the LDP Program, what needed at mainstream middle school and high school. The library and C-Step and Step programs joined forces to sponsor a workshop entitled Building a Presentation, which gave students guidance on preparing and delivering effective presentation. C-Step and Step also sponsored other activities in paying a program that was held on December 13th. By C-Step Specialist Andrea Hernibol taught the students about scientific facts of popular evergreen tree species, environmental sustainability associated with Christmas tree, with the Christmas tree industry. And students all made evergreen wreaths to bring home. And then, not in our packet, but there was a successful student orientation this week. It's held on Tuesday with over fifty new students in attendance. And sure, first week of classes is down your way. Early alert efforts helped our students be a more successful. So appreciate it. Support, yeah. Read all the rest of the detail.
Thank you. Diversity, equity, inclusion is included here. It's, that's her thoughts without, not here, but I'm sure we're pointing out where that maybe, any soldier to address the women's rights in Akron, Ohio, and twenty-sixty-six, not so terrible, because it's the perfect American woman. Be a bit of a little bit. A little bit about the No, great.
Okay, you ready for accreditation? So I just have one brief comment to make. I had sent around article, there was an article in the Times Union recently that talked about the upstate community colleges that were, you know, in danger of losing their accreditation and were, you know, being required to provide these reports. Today, the commission actually released a statement because they recognized that this was somewhat inflammatory. I'm not going to read you the whole statement. I will email it to you after. But the important thing, the important statement that I do want to underscore about this is, and I'm going to quote them. "The annual institution update process informs, but is separate from an institution being found out of compliance following the onsite self-study evaluation process. Institutions found out of compliance have different reporting requirements and must come into compliance within a defined timeframe as described in the commission's accreditation actions, policies, and procedures." So, I mean, the commission may hold some responsibility for this, you know, the way that this rolled out. But one of the, you know, the key points, the TU was trying to build off of the closing of St. Rose and some of the other, you know, institutional issues that have been going around and tie these supplemental information reports into that same conversation. And it's simply not the case. You know, these are much lower stakes reports. These are, this is information that, you know, they're obligated to make sure that, you know, they are keeping tabs on us and following up where they feel is appropriate. But these do not lead to direct accreditation actions as the newspaper and then, which was picked up by, you know, Channel thirteen and Channel ten and some of the other local media would have you to believe. So just to kind of calm the waters a little bit, as I said, after the meeting, I'll send out the commission's updated statement. But we did provide our supplemental information report on time as we were expected to do so. We have not heard back from the commission that they are looking for any additional information. And as I said to the board, we feel like we had a good story to tell. Of course, the years of measurement that they chose were the years, you know, immediately pre-pandemic and the first year of the pandemic. So it comes no surprise that institutions lost students during that time. And of the four indicators, we were only asked to report on that indicator. And as I know that I updated you in at least one follow-up report, since that time, since that measurement period, we have not exceeded the threshold that would require us to submit an additional supplemental information report. So just needed to get that information out there because certainly the local media was trying to make more of it than actually, I think, needed to be made. As far as our self-study is coming along, we are back, you know, with the spring semester starting this week. We are back at it. We have acquired a tool that's going to help, I think, the self-study organize the data, the evidence, and the writing. And we'll be implementing that with the working group, with the steering committee. They meet tomorrow. They meet tomorrow. And we look forward to continuing through our self-study process and to a successful site visit next year. So happy to answer any questions about any of that that you may have.
Trustee James, it's not here to report on the personnel, I mean, there's not much to report, just some provisions on vacancies and hires. So we want to trust you both in the policy.
I have nothing to report, considering things, Madam Chair. However, I would like, I would say that I hope everyone had a wonderful and safe holiday season.
Does anyone have any other bits to come from this one?
I just want to thank the board for their support and their patience. I hope to be back on campus very soon and see all your smiling faces, so.
We hope you're feeling better.
Yes.
Every day is better.
So I would like to make a motion for chair.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, folks, happy new day. Greg, will this save? Turn it off.
Yeah, so stop recording.